I'll go ahead and call to order our October 9th, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Longview. We are excited to have a full chamber. Thank you for everyone that's here to visit. We're glad to have you. First on our agenda is our invocation and pledge, and I will ask the representatives from the Republican Women of Gregg County, Nancy Holly, and Ms. Jennifer Kranzmann to come on up, and everyone to please stand.
Would you bow with me, please? Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the integrity and the desire to serve this city that we see among these workers, and for the warmth and friendliness of all, and that's why they say the city workers are the heart of Longview. We thank you for the opportunity to be here, to lift you up in the midst of this wonderful group of people who have gathered to do the work that is needed in Longview, and to consider each and every citizen and their concerns. But may it not be a heavy burden, for we roll this burden on you. And Lord, your shoulders are broad, and you are strong, and you're able to keep us in your wonderful hands. So we pray blessings in Jesus' name on this meeting. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Next on our agenda are a number of presentations. First presentation is for a proclamation recognizing the month of November as Veterans Appreciation Month. Karen, if you and your crew want to come on up, we'll all meet up here. Thank you, guys, for being here. We are here to talk about Veterans Appreciation Month coming up. Also, a very special Veterans Appreciation Event, A Salute to Heroes, happening on Saturday, November 1st, 2025. Did Karen or anybody want to say anything about that real quick?
Yes, it is our salute to heroes, and, you know, every veteran is a hero in my book. And so we're going to celebrate all the veterans here in Gregg County, and they come free and so forth, but it's going to be a wonderful celebration because it is all about them. That's why we're here. That's why we have freedom. And we lead the next generation to value freedom. And so if you want to come, call us, okay?
Perfect. It is my honor to recognize these brave individuals and their families that have made countless sacrifices, often at great personal risk, to preserve the liberties and values that define our country. It is fitting and proper to acknowledge, celebrate, and express our deepest gratitude to veterans for their courage, dedication, and service. Thus, we extend an invitation to the Veterans Appreciation Event, A Salute to Heroes, happening on Saturday, November 1st, 2025, at Maude Cobb Convention Center, hosted by the Republican Women of Gregg County. It is now, therefore, my privilege as mayor to proclaim the month of November 2025 as Veterans Appreciation Month, and encourage all citizens to join us in honoring our veterans through acts of service, remembrance, and gratitude. Let us reaffirm our commitment to supporting veterans and their families, not only in this month, but throughout the year. Congratulations. Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 14th, 2025, as Too Close to Home, Uniting Against Violence Conference Day. Come on up, Ms. Ward. Thank you so much for being here. This is to announce and celebrate an event happening from the Women's Center, which is next Tuesday, Too Close to Home, that helps educate our community on domestic violence and sex trafficking. It is open to the public and free?
Correct.
All right. So if you are available and able to join, I know that they'd love to have you. The Women's Center of East Texas is dedicated to providing safe haven, crisis intervention, and comprehensive support services to survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking in Gregg, Harrison, Upsher, Marion, Rusk, and Panola Counties. Too Close to Home, Uniting Against Violence, is a one-day event to educate stakeholders on identifying and addressing domestic and sexual violence, combating human trafficking, and empowering survivors in greater East Texas. It is my privilege as mayor of the City of Longview to proclaim October 14th, 2025, as Too Close to Home, Uniting Against Violence Conference Day here in the City of Longview. Congratulations. Next, one presentation of a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week and recognition of our 2025 poster contest winners. Chief Grimes, I think, are you helping me with this one? There you are. Do we invite everybody up at this time?
Bring them up.
Bring them up. All the award winners, all the Longview Fire, everybody. These are our pretty fantastic award winners, and we'll let you guys come up and take group photos when we're done with that, but tell me your name and your age and what school you go to.
My name is Max Sandburn, and I go to Birch Elementary, and I'm nine years old.
Is there anything you want to tell us about your poster?
Wait, I'm actually 10.
Is there anything on there you want to tell us about? No? Okay, perfect. Good job.
My name is Brooklyn, and I'm seven years old, and I go to Birch Elementary.
Awesome. Is there anything on your poster you want to tell us about? No? All right.
My name is Bella Birdsong. I'm 13 years old, and I'm from Punchy High School. And I made this because people throw away batteries, and they don't, like, be, like, they don't know what they're doing. So that's what I did. I made this so people can be more aware of that.
Perfect. Good job, guys. You said that a lot more succinctly than I did. Don't throw away your batteries. You don't know what you're doing. Fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. Most of the electronics used in homes daily are powered by lithium ion batteries, which, if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. The National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in these battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education, which you guys are helping with, great job, on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. The City of Longview first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of fires through prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. Our residents should follow three calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. It is my privilege as the mayor of the City of Longview to hereby proclaim the week of October 7th, 2025, as Charge into Fire Safety Week, and encourage all of our businesses and households to join the Longview Fire Department, and our students and artists, in their mission to ensure preparedness and providing lifesaving education to our community. Congratulations.
I want to thank you guys for making these posters, and everybody that participated. Thank you very much. This is an important part of the year, and it's a great cause. We want to spread the education and make sure that everybody's safe, and don't throw away the batteries because you don't know what you're doing. I like that. It's going to be a slogan now. So anyway, we're going to present the winners with a medal, and I'll make it over here in front. Who we have here first? Brooklyn. Ms. Brooklyn, congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Brooklyn. Congratulations. Mr. Max, here we go. Mr. Max, congratulations, buddy. 10 years old, not nine. And Ms. Bella, thank you so much. Okay, all right.
If you are with one of our award winners, will you come on up, and we'll take a group photo with you individually with all of our firefighters? So if you have a camera in the air, I know you're with somebody. Come on up here and take a photo. Anybody from Pine Tree, if you guys want to come up with your Birch folks? Come on, Derek, come on. Let's do individually. So Max, you're up first. Come here, Brooklyn, come here, baby. We'll do Max's group. You stay right there, and your family's going to come take a photo with all of Longview Fire with you. And we'll just scoot to the side. If you're Pine Tree, and you need to be in this photo, get in there. All right, where's Brooklyn's crowd? Come on up. Any Pine Tree person that wants to be in here. All right, good job, babe. Come on up. All right, you're the family with all the cameras. Come on, come on. Awesome. Congratulations. Okay, come on, we're taking a photo. I'll tag you in. Yeah, that's right. This is a delegation. I like it. Thank you, guys, for being here. As they're making their way out, Presentation Item D is from our Director of Public Works, Mr. Dwayne Archer. A presentation and discussion regarding changes to the collection of recycled materials. Mr. Archer?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Mcfee, good evening. As you know, we've got one of the premier recycling programs in East Texas. We ran into some issues, though. Are you going to hit my, okay. So this slide kind of shows you a little bit of the contamination that we're seeing from our residential collections. And if you'll go to the next slide, you can see some more. They have, you know, the amount of time that we had the program on pause has just caused people to continue to use that cart as a trash cart, which has increased the contamination, and it's really putting a burden on the MRF. Our communication team has done an amazing job trying to get that word out. That's the next slide, if you want to. They've really made sure to get that word out to everyone about the changes in recycling, that we're now recycling, it's now operating again, but we've seen very little actual change in the contamination rate from that. So what we're proposing is some changes in the way we handle, or the way we do our collection of the recycling. So what we propose is if your trash day is, let's say, on a Monday, your recycling day would be the next day. So it'd be the next day for each person. So the recycling trucks would run Tuesday through Friday, trash trucks from Monday through Thursday. That would allow people to say, okay, I want to recycle, so I'm going to make the effort to set mine out on my recycling day, as opposed to just putting it out with the trash. We do see a lot of bins out there with the blue lid that people are just using for trash. So part of this proposal is, yes, we will have that collection the day after, but if you put out a blue-lidded cart on trash day, we'll treat it as trash and just collect it and take it to the landfill. So that gives people, and it wouldn't be an additional charge, so it gives people that extra cart at their home, if they choose not to recycle. So there's a couple of real benefits that we'll see. So it's going to give us a cleaner recycling stream. Those people that are committed to recycling will be able to continue to do that, and those loads will be much cleaner. Right now, there are people who work very hard to make sure that they have the recycling ready, it's clean, it's set out, but then because of the contamination from other residents, that load might be rejected at the MRF. And we want to stop that. We want to make sure that if somebody's willing to put the effort into it, that their materials get recycled properly. One of them is improved collection efficiency. So currently, we might send a truck to the MRF to deliver a load, and it's rejected. So we've spent the time to go to the MRF. Now we'll spend time going to the landfill to dispose of it, and then get back on route. So you can imagine that increases the collection time quite a bit when we have to do that. Fleet optimization, that's another thing that we'll see, because when we have trucks running Monday through Thursday, and then Tuesday through Friday, it gives fleet services another day to do preventive maintenance on trucks. So those recycling trucks don't have a job on Monday, and we can do those preventive maintenance schedules on that Monday, allowing us two days a week. And then staff flexibility. So like I said, if those collection days are such, you have more staff available if you need to on a Monday, or on a Friday, you can adjust and bring them in. And it also, it does give the flexibility to the customers to say, hey, if you have a heart for recycling, here's an opportunity. You have that, and if you don't, you still have the opportunity to use that cart for trash collections. So currently, the, and this will be the next slide, currently at NITEX, the MRF that we use out of Kilgore, the tipping fee is $75 per ton. They're proposing, and we'll bring it to you at the next council meeting, once we get the agreement all worked out, they're proposing $150 ton for a load, if they've accepted it, that turns out to be contaminated. So by cleaning up our recycling, it's going to save us money in the long run for not having to pay nearly as much for these contaminated loads. And then the other option, though, would be that we'd have to go and pick those up with our trucks, and then bring them back to the landfill, which, you know, both options is a costly opportunity, therefore. So and so, the communication team is preparing to get the word out to everybody, saying, hey, yes, we're changing collection days, and we've set the date of November 3rd as the date we would begin this process. And so we'll work hard to make sure that we get that word out to everybody we can. We're going to be running stickers on carts, different things, to make sure that that word is out there. And then let me use this opportunity, on that next slide, let me use this opportunity to talk just a little bit about what we accept in our recycling. There's a lot of questions about that sometimes, and it really boils down to this. It's paper and cardboard, plastics. Now, we have historically told people ones and twos, and that's because if there was changes in the market, we didn't want to have to come back out and say, okay, now we're doing fives, and now we're doing sevens, or different things. But talking to Todd Lucas at NITEC, he's confident that he has a market for one through sevens. So we're going to change up that part of what we do, and put that word out to everyone. Just do ones and sevens, as far as plastics. The one caveat to that is film, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. But when we talk about film, that is like plastic bags and those kind of things. We do not need that to be in there. Not only is it an issue for them being able to look and see if that's a recycled material, they have to bust each bag open. It also causes a lot of problem with their machinery at the MRF. And then household metal cans. There's no need to take off the labels, but household metal cans. And so if we stick to those three things, then we'll be able to get those products that we need to be recycled. In the next slide, so here's where I talked about the film. People like to use plastic bags to put their recycling in, and then put it out in their cart. And you can see from those contaminated loads, it was mainly plastic bags was the contamination that they were seeing. So for them to be able to get that cleaned up, we really have to reduce the plastic bags. I mean, that's the important part. We want all of the trash, excuse me, all the recycling loose in the can when we collect it. And with that, I'll answer any question that y'all may have.
Questions, Mr. Archer? Go ahead.
I think we need to emphasize, wait a minute, this thing on. I think we need to emphasize again the importance of it's convenient to collect your recyclables. When you go around the house, you have a bag, maybe it's in the kitchen, storage room, or wherever, and you put your paper, your cardboard, your cans and stuff in that bag. But as Mr. Archer said, when you go to dispose of that, turn the bag up, dump the stuff out in the recyclable bin loose. Do not put the plastic bag in there. Take the plastic bag after you've emptied it and put it in the trash bin. And we've got to keep the plastic bags out of the recyclables. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Archer, if you don't mind, sir, just kind of repeating the pickup days again. So, for example, my pickup day is Tuesday for non-recyclables.
It will be the next day. So in your case, Tuesday, it will be Wednesday. So regardless of what a person's pickup day is for their trash, it would be the next day.
The following day.
Yes, sir.
Is it just so happens that anyone's garbage is picked up on a Friday that would force a Saturday? Or is it?
No, we run Monday through Thursday for our trash.
Sounds good. So my next question is, during our layoff, is there any way to trade in my old recyclable bin for a newer one or a new one?
Oh, sure. If you have any problems, yeah, we can get them replaced.
How would you suggest I do that?
They just need to contact, give the office a call at 237-1240. Any customer that has issues with the cans, give a call, 237-1240, and then we'll get somebody out to get it replaced.
And then someone just comes out, they'll contact you, or you leave it on the curb?
When you call, they'll ask you, leave it out at the curb, make sure it's clean, leave it out at the curb, and then we'll have a trailer that comes by, and they switch out the carts.
Can we do that also on City Send? Does anyone know?
Yeah, I think so. Yes, sir.
You're able to do so on City Send?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure Mr. Allen could show me how to use City Send.
Tomorrow.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Archer.
Congratulate, appreciate Mr. Archer's preparation and the fact that he knows that phone number. I mean, I only know like two phone numbers right now. I know my phone when I was growing up, but I mean, it's pretty impressive.
Dwayne, I would like to just celebrate the recycling program overall. I think that's been somewhat of your baby over the years, and I think it is widely supported in Longview. So I appreciate the creative solution that will make us more efficient and do a better job recycling. I recently had someone from Tyler approach me and ask how we were doing recycling, and I think you've done a good job building public support. But in Tyler, they pick up recyclables at individuals' homes once a month only, and they don't pick up compost at all. So here in Longview, I think we're very fortunate to have such a robust recycling program, so we need to take the opportunity to respect it, treat it well, and continue forward. So, great job. Go ahead. Mr. Newsted has questions?
Just a couple of questions. That $150 fee per ton that they proposed for the contaminated, will they still charge that if we go ahead and make this switch, or how does that work?
They will if it continues to be contaminated. Now, I think we'll fix the contamination part with just making it for the next day. But the plastic bag thing is a behavior we'll have to make sure that we change, because if we continue to bring out loads full of bags, then those will be rejected, and we'll have to pay the 150 a ton.
All right. And then if it's a holiday that they, I know y'all run all the time, even on holidays, a lot of the holidays, but the couple that made that hit, does that just shift to one day even in those cases?
Thanksgiving and Christmas will be those weeks that you're talking about, and we will just not do recycling and ask people to hold it till the next week.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Last thing. You and I had spoken sometime back, and I know changing and going to this system has seemed to be successful for other cities around, making the adjustment, having it one day later. So even though I'm used to one day of trash, I'm willing to do this as well, and I think it's easy to ask for everybody else because we want to see this be successful.
Yes.
Because you and I talked about it. It's a lot more expensive to get rid of recycling stuff than it is our regular trash, and we're wanting to make it better for our kids down the road. So, hey, put forth the effort.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Visiting with the fellow that's heading up the recycling project over in Kilgore, visiting with Mr. Lucas. He's got new state-of-the-art equipment. He's trying very hard to make this project work, and we've got to clean it up if we want to continue to recycle. If he goes out of business, there will be no recycling. It's just that clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good bottom line, Sid. Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next is citizen comment. I have a speaker card from Masika Ray. Come on up. If you have filled out cards, you guys can stand together, but if you'll tell us your name, and then you've got three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Masika Ray, Masika Akila Ray, and I give thanks to God for sustaining me through trials that could have broken me. In 2022, I survived a traumatic encounter with the Longview Police Department. During a mental health crisis, I was beaten, falsely accused, and unjustly separated from my children. I was held in the Gregg County Jail for 10 days, denied bail twice, until a compassionate nurse stepped in and helped secure my release. Shockingly, police asked my then-10-year-old daughter for the passcode to my phone in apparent effort to access my Ring camera footage, evidence that exposed their misconduct. I believe this is why I was detained without due process. But by faith, I rose from that fire, as Psalm 34:19 reminds us, that many are the afflictions of the righteous, but the Lord will deliver them from them all. Now I'm running for United States Congress in Texas District 1 to fight that no one else has denied justice because of who they are and what they've endured. My lived experience documented in my memoir, I Am Summoned to Testify, has equipped me to fight for policies that protect the vulnerable and restore fairness. I wrote Nathaniel Moran, and he sent me back a generic letter. If we elect you to serve the people, then we expect you to serve the people. I believe in law enforcement with integrity. I support good police officers who serve with courage, compassion, and accountability. In a just system, every department should reflect the values of mutual respect and protection for all, like the spirit portrayed in the show In the Heat of the Night. Within the right leadership, that vision is possible. If it is not happening, it is time to elect new leaders in all facets, including the Sheriff and Police Department. The right to appeal bail decisions will be held on the ballot this November. The President is also talking about suspending the writ of habeas corpus. Longview, Texas has already been doing that. I would hate for another family to fall prey to the government that is supposed to serve and protect. Where are the mercy and grace and the innocent until proven guilty? Together, united in faith, justice, and love, our neighbors, we can build a better East Texas for everyone, and let's vote and fight for one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Next speaker card I have is Laura Brown.
Zora.
Oh, Zora, I'm sorry.
I'm not as a good speaker as my mom. Okay. When I look back to 2022, I think of all the things that went wrong. My mother had been falsely accused of when all she did was discipline me. My mom is a hard-working fighter, and I don't know what I'd do without her. The police had separated me and my sister from my mom for months. She had loved me for all the years I've been living. There's been too many crimes and wrongful doing things by the police. The police are supposed to help and protect us, not hurt us. Though I am 14 years old, I believe we should take the opportunity to stop this and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Zora.
And it was actually the CPS that falsely accused us and then the police. Both documents were wrong, and it was proved that their documents were wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Next speaker card I have is John Smith.
Counsel.
I've been a citizen, well, dating back to 1980 in Longview. My family is invested in Longview, the Smith household. On October 6th, I received a visit from a Longview police officer. I've sent the counsel an email with a two-minute interaction between my wife and the police officer. First, I think I'd like to ask for some direction with respect to public and private recordings. Now, I'm a fairly competent person with the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, freedom of press, the right to record in public, to record public citizens in the course of their duties. All those are constitutionally protected. So, the officer, in the two-minute conversation that we may have to revisit this with another meeting after the council has had the benefit of seeing the Ring video from my door, wanted to engage me in a conversation at 7:32 PM about my alleged recording on a street that I've lived on for 13 years. I'm disappointed with the Longview Police Department about that. I don't know who would have to authorize an officer coming to my home at 7:32 PM to engage me, not in an investigation that I know of. I'm not under any investigation. In fact, I just came from the Longview Police Department before I got here just to ask that question. I waited for about 10 or 15 minutes, and no one ever showed up, some supervisor. But that's okay. My concern has to do with the fact that if I'm recording, whether I'm recording with meta glasses, or whether my Ring doorbell is recording anything that that eye, that camera can see, or even if I'm recording, say, on a cell phone, standing in my garage with everything that I can see. Apparently, this officer was there to engage me in a conversation about what I was doing. I wasn't aware that I had to explain anything that I was doing, that I legally had a right to do on my own property, whether that's walking up and down my know-through street and praising God through a devotional app, as I often want to do, morning and evening, or if I'm, say, walking and having a conversation with someone on the Falcon Way. My little home doesn't leave much room for privacy, so my wife would probably rather not hear some conversations with good friends. Or I could possibly have, on any given day, morning or night, been playing chess, or, for that matter, I could have actually been recording the Waning Gibbous Moon. I'd like some guidance, please, and I'd like an explanation as to why and if I can expect another police officer to come at my doorstep and ask my family questions about me doing something that is a publicly protected right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next speaker card I have is Brenda Woolridge.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brenda Woolridge, and I reside at 2217 South 13th Street. And what I'm addressing the city council about is the upkeep of South Longview. And I have several things that I'm just going to list off, and you can do what you want to do with them. The first one is concerning the lots on the South Side. A lot of them are not being mowed. Some of them, a portion of them have been mowed. And I was told that they have contractors now that do a lot of the work. And some of the places I've called and expat, the contractor was supposed to do it, and they didn't. And then some of the cities, I don't know if they reduced the people that they have working or what, but they are not being mowed, they're not being kept up. And another thing I was, this is that contractors need to be checked upon after doing a job if they have done it, because otherwise you would not know if they've done the job. And the limbs we had from the storm way last year are still in some people's yards. They're still on the side of the road, and they have not been picked up. This is over a year, going into a second year. And the main thing is that making Longview beautiful. Well, South Longview is not beautiful right now. There are lots all down the highway, there are trees all down the street that have not been taken care of. And South Longview has not been taken care of. And some of them, you know, you may know and you may not. But this is one thing. If these jobs for the South Longview are not important to the leaders, it would not be important to the people doing the job. People know what is important and valued to others. So when we are not valued, South Side not valued, it's kind of like to me like a family with a stepchild. You can tell that dad, mother can tell that stepchild all day long, I love you just like I do my natural child. But if you're doing different things for your child and not doing it for the stepchild, that's all they have to go on. It's what you do or what you don't do. And I'm encouraging the city to really look at what we are doing on South Longview, because it needs help. And if it takes us combining North Side with South Side to get some help, because Longview, South Side is old, and some of it needs to be helped. You have a lot of senior citizens that don't know what to do or know who to come to or anything, and we need help to get South Side help keep, and then therefore we can help maintain it. And we pray that y'all would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woolridge. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak and fill out a card after? Come on up, Mr. G. Floyd.
G. Floyd, I might give a little bit of information about what you're seeing inside the limbs on the side. Swepco went through, and they trimmed the limbs off of the lines in a lot of places. And what they do is, they actually pile it onto the property where it is. And they expect for the property owner to call the city or to dispose them themselves. So they did it on two of my properties, and so I've already had them removed or something like that. But they are, they're all over Longview, but that's what Swepco does. But they don't actually remove it, they just actually do the cutting to get it off the lines and stuff like that. So a lot of property owners simply need to be informed that Swepco expects for you to remove those or call the city, and I know the city will come and they'll remove them. But a lot of them are just sitting there, and they've been over there for about 10 days to a week since they've been like that. So a lot of property owners just need to know that Swepco expects you to remove it, and you have to call the city or, in my case, I had somebody to remove them for me.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for further discussion or questions?
Yes, ma'am.
What you got?
Several. You want them all? Okay. Item B, E, F, G. E, F, and G.
Okay. B is Chief Grimes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any specific question?
Just, yes, sir, if you would, please. I looked through the detailed agenda here. Would you kind of explain to me what these items are?
So the striker cots are the company striker, are the provider of the cots that we use in the back of the ambulance. And we're replacing three of those, and I believe three Lucas devices and two stair chairs.
The cots, are those the ones that go up and down?
They're the powered cots, yes, sir.
And what is a Lucas?
A Lucas is a device that does CPR. It actually squeezes the body instead of manual compressions, and has a better output, and so it's an automatic compressive device.
Okay. All right. I think that's, yeah, I just wanted to understand what they were.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief Grimes.
Thank you.
Moving on to C is John Albertson.
Hey, John.
Yes, sir.
Would you go just give us extra information about this for the community?
Yes, sir. This is a contract with ALK Investments to place a dog wash station at our dog park at the trailhead at Summers Drive. They would pay us $2,400 annually, and they give 25 cents per wash to the animal shelter for the city of Longview. We would have no cost at the city's end. Everything would be on their end, and they've been great partners through the process.
Awesome. Appreciate that. And thank you, Lloyd, for looking at the investment in Longview and the donation to the Longview Animal Care Adoption Center with the proceeds. Thank you. Appreciate that, John.
And I was excited about this one when I heard it. And I hate that Ray has stepped away, because I said him with his animals, he ought to be the first one on the dog washed over there. But he's back, so I want to remember that. We don't let him out of that. But I think it's a great deal, because that area gets a little wet at times, and that's a perfect place. Thank you all so much.
Yep. Absolutely. Thank you, John. E, F, and G is all Mr. Archer.
You want me to start it?
Oh, I can start. You can start.
Well, I just, my question was, like on item E, you got this Chevrolet Tahoe. Where will it be used?
This will be used at PD.
Police Department?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do these come with all the specialized equipment on them, or do we rig them up here?
We rig them up here, and that's what item H is, where we're actually purchasing the items to make them ready.
Okay. So years back, there was a couple of companies around the state that specialized in these vehicles, kind of making them special for police work, such as that. Are these just regular vehicles, or are these, so to speak, specked out for police work?
They're a police vehicle. They're a police pursuit vehicle.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I had on item, and I'll just real quick, on item F, we've got 10 Tahos and one Chevrolet Silverado truck. Where will they be in service at?
That's also in the police department.
Okay, that will be. And then item G, two Tahos.
Those are two red ones for fire department.
Oh, those are fire department, okay. Well, we, so if there's any items specializing in those, we'll be doing that installation locally?
Yeah. Actually, I think these will have, no, I take that back. We will be doing those locally. But it'll be a contract that we have to do it.
Okay. That's right. Excuse me. Yeah, go ahead.
That's fine. And Mr. Archer and I had spoke about this, but I think it's great for the public to know. You get to looking at the prices of those vehicles, and they look all the same, and you can get some at about $53,000, some at $54,000, and some at $55,000. And we spoke about that, doing to the timing that's on the lot, you know, because some was purchased from Region 7, some was off the Texas Buy Board. But would you explain a little bit of that so people understand? Because that was a question I had. Why is there a difference in what we're buying and the timing of our purchases and things like that?
Right. Well, you know, when we get to this point of the year where budget has been approved, said this is the things that we're going to be purchasing, then we go out and we start getting bids for those. And in this case, you'll notice E is one Tahoe by itself. It was a different package, and we could save about $3,000 by purchasing that from another vendor as opposed to. So we look at all those things before we actually place the purchases, so we could save any money that we possibly can.
Right. And I appreciate that. I just, I want people to understand, in case they look at it item by item, like, what's the price difference? But we're doing our due diligence to make sure we got the right price.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Any other items we want to discuss or have questions on? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
May I have two, please?
In a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. We will move on to zoning items. This is zoning item A. A public hearing will be held to consider application HL2501 filed by Cody and Wendy Arnold. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. So the applicant is requesting a local historic landmark designation for the Benjamin Franklin Martin House located across from Christis Good Shepherd at the corner of 6th Street and Turner Drive. This will be Longview's 12th local landmark if approved. The B Franklin Martin House is located at 800 North 6th Street in Nugget Hill Historic District. This home is a contributing structure within that historic district and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. This is an English Tudor home that was built in 1933 with guest living quarters and a light cream-colored brick facade. The home was designed by Zimmerman, Peters, and Strange, constructed by Buford Bracy, with the original homeowners, Benjamin Franklin and Lorraine Martin. BF Martin was fairly instrumental within Longview, and so was his spouse, Lorraine. Mr. Martin was co-owner of the Longview Coca-Cola Bottling Company, and Ms. Martin was credited as a prime mover in organizing the Longview Symphony. They chose Nugget Hill as their home shortly after they were married. The BF Martin Franklin House is a significant and contributing structure within the Nugget Hill Historic District and meets many of the criteria listed in the UDC for criteria of designation for local historic landmark. The Historic Preservation Commission, along with Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Choi?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. Does this affect the people, I guess, that are applying? Wait a minute. Okay, the people that are applying for this, they live there in the home?
Right now, it's currently under construction, but their plan is to move into the home. Yes, sir.
Under construction, you mean renewing it?
Renovation.
Renovation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, renovation. Will this in any way affect if they decide down the road to rent it? Do they still have control over tenants and renting and something? I mean, this doesn't take any of their ownership rights, I guess, from them doing this, does it?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This item requires a public hearing, which I will open at this time. I do not have any speaker cards. I do believe the owners are here for questions. Okay. Any speakers that would like to speak in favor or opposed to the project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved.
Thank you to Nugget Hill, by the way. Beautiful area.
Zoning item B, a public hearing will be held to consider application S2505 filed by DeMarcus King, requesting a special use or specific use permit. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a neighborhood pub, tavern, or wine bar in general retail zoning district. The applicant is proposing a small bar inside of Longview Mall. A specific use permit is required for this use with less than 2,500 square feet in general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Staff does find this proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Go for it.
Okay. The, is this going to be a self-contained facility? I mean, I'm interested in the, when it opens and closes, does it open into the mall, or do they have an outside entrance? Or is this, you have to be walking in the mall in order to go in this facility?
It's internal into the mall, so you can't, you have to enter into the mall to get into their suite. They are located, if you know where the buckle is, right next, they will be located right next to the buckle.
Okay, but it'll be their own facility?
Yes, sir.
But it will be, okay, I was just concerned with entry and exit house, but you have to be inside the mall?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This item requires a public hearing that I will open at this time. Are there any speakers that would like to speak on this project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Thank you so much, Ms. Choi. We'll move on to action items. Action item A, consider a resolution amending the financial management performance criteria for the city of Longview to maintain unassigned fund balance in the amount of 15% of budgeted annual operating expenses. Mr. McPhee.
Yes, and I'd like to just give a brief introduction on both of these items with detailed questions to come if, as we have these discussions. But I thought I'd start with a slide that provides a snapshot of the current fund balance and the potential impact to the general fund reserves based on these action items placed before you tonight. As you can see, our current projected general fund balance is $23.6 million. Currently, council policy requires us to Currently, council policy requires us to maintain a fund balance of 10% of the general fund operating costs, which is about $10 million. Tonight, the first action, item A, is to consider increasing that minimum reserve to 15%. So that would be increasing that 10 million to 15, so 5 million. Understand that these general fund reserves and what you set aside as the minimum is the primary safety net. So increasing the required minimum is a strategic fiscal decision and conservative action to protect the city's financial position, but also to ensure that we maintain our AA bond rating, our credit rating, so which is imperative to keep up with the city's long-term debt on the books. We want to keep that credit rating. It helps us financially for determining interest rates or things like that. That's just like our own credit rating. The next item is that is for consideration is taking a proactive step to address a long-term need as discussed previously during the council meeting, a $5 million investment as seed money for a dedicated fire apparatus replacement program. This will ensure that the fire department has a planned, predictable, and sustainable way to update that critical lifesaving equipment rather than proceeding as we have in the past and that's facing large unfunded expenses at one time and down the road. Another point on this slide for the reserves that I want to call up again is that the city has saved approximately $4.5 million from our original expenses that we thought we were going to have for the Stamper Park. And that's really due to $3 million coming in from the grant reimbursement for at the state level and then a million and a half for the bids coming substantially lower than our initial estimates. So lastly, but not least on this slide, I want to I want to refresh everyone's memory. In 2018, voters approved the largest ever bond that's ever been issued by the city of Longview and that was $104.2 million. Unfortunately, that bond and the projects were met with the largest inflation that we have seen in decades. And of course, we just have to account for these economic realities. We're all feeling the effects of inflation and those capital projects are no exception. Even though we have managed to close the gap and leveraged grants and interest already, we can deliver these projects as promised to the community, we still think we need about $3.7 million. Now, we're we're still pursuing grant opportunities, but we won't know for some time. So I think that's important to keep, just like we talked about in January of our work session. I think that's important important for the city council to keep in mind moving forward. So after we make those necessary and strategic allocations, should council pass both of those, investing in the public safety and and covering those bond shortages, we would be left with about $4.5 million above the minimum 15% if that is what the council does. This is the flexible funding that the council has at its disposal to address one-time purchases or things of that nature for the foreseeable future. So with that, I'm happy to answer any general questions. If we get into specifics, I'll probably lean on Director Angela Cohen on those.
Thank you, Ron. Questions, discussion? Go ahead.
I have a question. So on the grant and the projected, well, basically any funds that are coming in, do we have a status on like the $3 million? Do we have a status on the other grant that you were speaking of? I think it was going to be what Streets or something?
Yeah.
Do we have statuses on those?
The the Cotton Street grant that we applied for, I believe we should hear by the beginning of this month, I mean, beginning of next month or the end of this month. There's a Texas Transportation Committee meeting, I believe, on the 29th of this month? The 30th? Okay, thanks, Mary Ann. And we'll we'll know about that then. The state grants, we're working on the paperwork. We were contacted by the state office. John, if you have updates in particular, if you'll share that with council, I know that we're working on that.
Oh, we actually have a meeting next week with the state to discuss that grant for the pool and to go through all of the paperwork and beginning work for that, so.
Okay, so my concern would be that, you know, us going ahead and saying, hey, let's do this now and increase it to 15% with not having a concrete of we're getting in these funds. With the way everything is going now, you don't know necessarily if you're going to get certain grants and y'all all know how that's going. So my concern would be to if we're going to do this now, what happens if those grants don't come? And then we've raised that we've raised this up to 15% and then we already have projects in plan and then we have other things to consider that we might be making decisions on as well tonight, so.
I don't think that there'd be any hardship with that. So even if you take that back out, then we'd be talking about whether we were going to do the 3.7 with the bonds. That would be the discussion at that time. But we know we're getting the 3 million. We know because we've already approved the bid. But even if you back that out and thought we weren't getting the 4.5 on the pool, we still, I mean, we come down to zero there, but we know that we're getting those things and then we could decide whether we were going to do the bond projects or not. But I do think it is eminently important that we go ahead and make these commitments. We have the money. We know we need to do it. We've been talking about it for more than 12 months. If we continue to kick it down the road, we're never going to get it done. So I very strongly believe we need to do it now. We have the committed Texas state funds. The only one we don't know is Cotton Street. And if we got Cotton Street, then the 3.7 would go away and then we'd end up with four, I mean, well, almost 4 million additional, so we'd end up with 8 million extra. So it only gets better. It doesn't get worse. This is worst-case scenario.
And so on the inflationary impact on the bond projects, like, do we actually know where we're at on that on each one? Because I know sometimes the prices change. I mean, over time, we've gotten different numbers and and that's concerning as well. I mean, because we're all saying, yeah, we're guaranteed to get this, but the numbers often change.
Yeah, this is whittled down. Because you remember over a year ago when we had the fund retreat, Rollin had worked those and whittled them down and has kept them up to date inflation-wise because they've continued to try and whittle them down so that number gets smaller. So I think the answer is yes. Yep. I don't know who was first.
John.
I was just going to say, the cost to not maintaining the 15% minimum will be greatly more than any other option on that. So it's not really more of a question of if we should if we want to do it or it's really a matter of we should do this and make sure because especially as we're spending down money on the reserves and to set the future council and futures citizens up for a strong financial position for the city, the 15% minimum is something that we really just need to move forward in doing to maintain that bond rating for us, especially when we're talking about the next item, which is the fire apparatus replacement program seed money. We're talked about the 5 million instead of the 3.5 million due to the fact that we can self-fund that because of our extreme great credit rating, which gives us an interest rate of what?
2.7.
2.7, 2.75? So it saves us money in the long run by maintaining that reserve balance. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
I think the the reserve balance of 15% in my previous conversation with Angela, it seems to be that everybody is getting a little all across the country, you know, that little times are a little shaky and stuff like that. And so the more reserve you can have, the better you are. And when the rating agencies look, if you're just 10%, you're going to stay at 10%. Well, maybe we need to raise the interest rate a little bit on them and and the ratings. So I think the the 15% gives us security that we're going to stay in the financial ability that we have now. I mean, I think it's everything, everything nowadays is based on your credit rating. Insurance, you, everything is, I mean, it's cities, people, individuals, home purchases, car purchases. I mean, you apply for a credit, you know, everything's based on your credit rating and all of that. I mean, it's becoming just common. So I think it's very important. I would like to make another comment here on the $3 million on the pool. There was a little concern there. I talked to Jay Dean this afternoon. He said the $3 million is in the bank. It's in the general fund. Don't worry about it. He said, just tell them the money is there and they will receive it. He told me that this afternoon.
I sure like checks in the mail.
Well, he said it's in the bank, so whatever that means.
You can see, likes to announce it, just not come drop it off.
Yes.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Shannon.
No.
Okay. I just want to think about the fire apparatus on the thing. So we're saying we're spinning down the the fund balance, but the fire apparatus, really what that is, is that's an unfunded liability right now. This is something that needs to be done where so that we're not impacting citizen's safety and providing the equipment and the tools needed for the fire department to provide that. Again, goes to insurance rating, ISO, all different things that could be impacted from that. And so for this, so for the fire apparatus side of thing of it, it's an unfunded liability. This gets us projected out funding for 20 years, I think it was, based on that. And so this is something for long-term sustainability, which is what you should be using your savings for, is to help create these kind of things where you're either saving money or making money on them as well. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yep. That's all, Ray.
No. Go ahead. Go ahead. I want to talk about the fire apparatus. By us doing the 5 million rather than the 3.5, we saved almost 2% in interest on the long-term, which was a saving of about $900,000 over the top of this. So that's the reason for the 5. The Cotton Street project, you should like say, if we received that grant, which, you know, we're on speculation, we're hopeful that we'd be able to do that, that would pretty much almost be a wash on that 3.7 that you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Now, I would rather have the check in hand rather than check in the mail and money in the bank. Jay, get on the ball down there, write us a check and get it sent or, you know, pull your strings. But that's something I'd like to do and you mentioned something about a conversation, John, Mr. Albertson, sorry. But no, you don't have to. So your conversation that you're going to have going forward, talking about this next week, there's nothing in there that would lead us to believe, oh, there's a change of heart or a change of mind or anything like that. It's just the common policy. Okay.
Ray?
Yes. Quick question. A few meetings back, a couple of months ago, maybe, Mr. Archer and or Mr. McPhee, we approved about 1 million of our fund balance to spend on roads.
We did not. We discussed but did not take action.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. It was 2 million?
Yep.
Okay. So we haven't taken action.
We have not.
All right. But yet that would affect this once we do decide at some point, correct?
Yep.
Make this lower. Yeah.
That's why we are not discussing it tonight.
Sure. I understand. Okay. And then the 15% minimum is what we're actually choosing as well on our fund balance when the average is 10% normally that keeps us.
That's what it has been?
Yes.
I don't know if that's average, but I know Rollin's been asking us to make it 15 for many years.
So the reason we've been able to maintain the AA credit rating that in addition to just good fiscal management overall is because we have had and council is aware of this because we've talked about it for quite some time, the way we have started budgeting for needs, if you look back at the fund balance slide from our budget presentations, you will see that reserve fund continued to grow over the last five years. And so while our policy was only 10%, because we had so much money in the bank, they credited that. So it appeared to them we had 15% or more in reserve. That's why we got those rankings. It was not because of the policy, it was because of the money in the bank. Did I say that right, Angela? Okay.
Great. Thank you guys for answering my questions. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Cully?
So that 15%, Angela, what how many days could the city of Longview be able to withstand with that reserve amount?
That would put us at the recommended three months.
Three months. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that we all want to be, we want money in reserve. But it seems like, I guess I need and we want the rating, but it seems like we've got some unknowns on some of this grant money. I just want to kind of get some clarification or explanation of what what is the harm in the delay until we get, you know, until we know we had the Cotton Street and the.
I think the harm would be that we've been delaying it for multiple years now. I mean, we talked about this more than a year ago at our fund balance retreat and at some point we'd just have to be brave enough to do it or we're going to get new council members and it's not going to get done. Rollin has been asking for it for probably three years or more.
Because we, I mean, with the Cotton Street and then with what Ray said, I mean, that's looking at what, 2 million for the roads, Cotton Street?
I'm not going to bring back roads to vote on.
But that would be.
So we're not going to spend it.
I'm hoping these grants happen, but I mean, it seems like we're doing, we're thinking about two things. We want to save money, but yet we don't. We still know there's some some things that we're that are out there that we can't.
Oh, I don't think so. I think that's the answer. I'm not going to bring back the 2 million on roads to vote on because right now we have 4.5 that is still our cushion. And so I'm not suggesting that we do anything except for maybe some other smaller things like we talked about a pay study and we talked about some renovations here. So we may talk about other things. But I think before we talk about anything else, we need to do the two things that are needs, which are fire and savings, and we just need to be done with it and not have any more. Let's get to this point. Let's get to this point because who knows when we're going to get 3 million from the state. I'm sure that they're going to give it to us, but if we wait on it, something else will happen and there will be another moving thing. And sometimes we just have to be brave enough up here to make a big decision and we have enough money to vote on these two things and still have 4.5 in savings. So that's I don't there's no, this is worst-case scenario. We don't get the Cotton Street grant and we've gotten the two that are confirmed. So I don't think there's any danger in doing that tonight and moving forward and no reason to wait. Only reasons that we have to move forward now. Yep, sorry, go ahead.
My thoughts on this is you save and invest first and you spend what's left. My concern is you're going to spend and then you're going to save and invest what's left and then that happens, you don't save and invest. And again, this is not something, as Rollin was mentioning, they're looking at the total balance, but they're also looking at the trend. If the trend is you're adding money to your savings account every month, then it looks good. You're not in a issue where the spending is becoming a problem, where you're having to tap into your cash reserves to maintain your operating in a sense, right? So you're doing that. When the trend starts going negative and goes down or whatever, not goes down, then now it looks like you're in a different weaker financial position because of the direction that that money's going. So maintaining the bond rating and doing that is the most prudent financially thing that we can do as a council. And again, investing in things that are going to not that are going to be unfunded liabilities and getting those out of there because you can have the $5 million in the bank and feel like you're wealthier, but in turn, you're actually lost money because we're buying these engines later when they've already went up in price more. That's at the whims of council if they decide they want to approve that or not or how tight the budget is in in preceding years, where this have put them on a set schedule for that. On the roadside of things, I'm not in support of the roads due to the fact that this is an ongoing maintenance expense that we have and you're using savings money for something that's automatically going to be something that we need to be maintaining anyways and you're adding workload to an already highly worked street department to add more to them as well on top of that. So the thing is that's something if we're wanting to look at roads, that should be part of our annual budget process and not part of a savings spend budget process. So that's where I feel on the decision for that. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Moore?
Okay, so, I mean, I want to be clear that we are all here to make sure that we do a sustainable plan for fire. That's not a question. And we all agree that we do want to raise it to 15%. But like I said, there are concerns because there are decisions that we have to make that we don't know the total cost of what it will be when we go into like executive session on things that we need to talk about as far as Camden Court and all of those things like that.
None of that will come out of this.
But we don't know exactly what's going to happen with that, with that whole area. We don't know the cost of actually repairing the problem. And so that's my concern.
No, that's, I think we do actually know the answer to that, but it would come out of drainage, not this fund. It's a different fund.
And how much is in the drainage? I mean, I'm just, like I said, for me, I just like to know the actual numbers.
It is not related to this vote, though.
I understand that, but those, those things like that that are happening in the background will affect what's in the reserve.
It will not. It will not.
If we don't know the exact amount that is going on with Camden Court and everything that's going to happen with them, that is not the total, we know a roundabout, but we don't know exacts right now because we haven't even discussed and voted on that.
That is all out of drainage fund, though. Everything will be paid out of drainage fund, none will be out of reserves.
So do we know the amount in drainage fund right now?
Somebody does.
1.5 million.
And so you're saying that the total amount is going to be 1.5 million, nothing over that?
Oh, that's not the, she's saying how much is in the fund, not how much we're going to spend.
That's what we're going to use, is drainage fund to.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. So do we know the total amount of what that's going to be?
I think we need to talk about that in executive session, but it is not related to this agenda item. I promise. It is not related in any way to what we're talking about tonight.
Can I ask this question? And talking about this a year ago, I wasn't, I wasn't in here with that. You know, when this was brought up, talking about moving to a 15%, I'm 100% behind that. Dad, love you. Kind of like my dad said, hey, do, do we need to wait 30 days, do we need two weeks till we hear from, till we have our conversation with the state, possibly hear on the Cotton Street project and come back and vote and say, hey, we're bringing this to a vote on this date. Is it better for us than that? Because I'll just bring an elephant out in the room. You know, a lot of people see when you get down real short on your reserve balance and where you're at, if a big project comes up, people look for bonds. I'm not, I'm not for a bond. I want us to operate on what we've got for a budget. You know, I think those, that takes a lot of time, a lot of conversations. You've got to know exactly what you're doing. And you're not going to hear that come out of my mouth. That's not what I'm about. But I want to make sure that we approve this, that we're not putting ourselves so close to the edge that if something, you know, God forbid, happens, that State of Texas goes broke or something and we don't get our $3 million bond or Cotton Street project don't come through, all of a sudden, we're not sitting as pretty as we were. And so. Well, we got a pretty good military. But anyway, like I said, I wasn't here a year ago when these conversations started. I've just been on the recent, and I'm like, if, if two meetings from now sits us down to where we've got a better visual, I'm, I'm actually great with that.
I guarantee it will not be two meetings from now. We will not have the three million from the state. Two meetings from now, we will get no clarity at the next meeting. It'll be how to do the process, but we will not receive it. And we will be talking in 12 months to do those things. That is unfortunately just, just how it goes. So I, I am not, yeah, I want to vote on this tonight because we need to get it done. We've discussed it. We've had time. There will always be some sort of moving financial piece that we will have in another fund or something else that comes up that we need, but we need to be brave enough to get this done. Yes, Ms. Moore?
And I'm going to say this again. It's not like that we're not brave enough to get this done. I just feel like, well, I'll just make a motion to table for 30 days.
I have a motion to table?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling for 30 days?
Aye.
Aye.
I have four. Item is tabled for 30 days.
Now, is that, is that item A and B or just one?
It's just item A. I will move on to action item B. Consider an ordinance amending the city of Longview 2526 budget to allocate fund balance in the amount of five million to, to a certain count for the establishment of the Fire Apparatus Replacement Fund. Mr. McPhee, I believe he said everything he needs to say on that. Any discussion on this one?
I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
So did we get, we asked for the, what the monthly payment amount would be last time? Did we get that?
For the seven-year note?
For the, if we do the $5 million C, did we get the monthly, what the monthly payment would be?
It's 950,000.
950,000. And did we also figure out what, what exactly would be the maintenance and all of that? What's included in this contract?
The maintenance on this.
Like, is it within the warranty, like?
It's a one-year warranty on the fire apparatus.
And then this with the five million C, this is what we were, these apparatus we were on and how is that going to work?
The current proposal was to purchase two of the apparat, I'm sorry, was it three?
It was four.
Four of the apparatus, and then we would own those and then lease the two busiest ones when, that get to their end of service life within that 10 years and have no reserve life left. So we, those, those two would go back to Appleton or to the manufacturer, and then we would start over again with a new lease.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action B is approved. Items of community interest. Mr. Conley, we'll start with you.
Know what's up there. Fall Festival coming up, Pine Tree, Saturday, October 18th. I'll be at the stadium. Really, anybody in Longview looking for some, a good way to have a good time with your family. It's a great, a great event. Free hot dogs and there's a lot of games and activities. And it's not, it's a very cost-effect, cost-effective way to have a fun night with the family. And I think I love that Pine Tree does that. And then the next slide I'd like to show is the National Night Out. And I just got pictures of two of the elementaries that I have worked with, with Birch and Parkway, great attendance. And then I wanted to recognize the superintendent of Pine Tree, Steve Cluckston, our mayor, Mr. Mary Ishihara. And I just want to say to everyone that doesn't, our mayor is very impressive that we got a text. I felt very, I felt like, wow, I'm way behind on this because our mayor had been to, let's see if I can find this. I think at like 4:30, she'd already been to five events. Is that right? I mean, like.
Moving fast.
How many events total did you?
Thirteen.
That's impressive. And, but I just think I love the National Night Out all over. It's a great way to connect communities, but also allow our young people to really see the benefits of our, our fire and police and first responders and all they do and that connection. So I'm really proud of Longview and National Night Out. Thank you guys for all you do for that.
Good.
That's it.
Ms. Moore?
I just want to say it was a great National Night Out around Longview and I enjoyed it. And thanks to everybody, police, public safety, we all had a good time.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I actually have some items tonight. Halloween movie. Join us for a spooky good time at Movie at the Rec on Friday, October 24th at 6:00 PM at my favorite place, Broaden Recreation Center. This free community event will feature the 2019 animated film, The Addams Family, a fun, family-friendly favorite that's perfect for Halloween weekend. Come early to grab your seat and snacks. Concessions will be available for purchase. Don't forget to wear your best costume for a chance to win prizes in our costume contest before the movie begins. And I can't wait to see what Mr. Albertson's going to wear. I wear black. All right, next. Touch a Truck. Touch a Truck, Feed a Family. Longview Community Ministries Touch a Truck, Feed a Family will be held from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, October 18th at the Longview Mall. This event is designed for children and adults to see, touch, learn, and interact with dozens of fascinating vehicles. Admission to the event is free, but a jar of peanut butter for LCM's food pantry or monetary donation of choice would be greatly accepted. So please come out to Touch a Truck, Feed a Family. And last but not least, finally, the newest member of the Wade family. Everyone gets to meet him. Her, I'm sorry, her. Her. Her name is Kuroi, which is black for Japanese. And it's Kuro for short. So I'd like to thank Ms. Hubbard and her staff for making this adoption painless for me. And also, they do great with vaccinations for puppies. As you guys know, I've, I've posted over the years, over this past year, our puppies that are up for adoption. And so I can't encourage everyone enough to go out, see our animal service. They're great people down there, very knowledgeable. They're able to look at your animals and give you great diagnosis on their development, things to do to help them development. And there's also a obedience course that's offered through the city of Longview. So please go out and welcome Kuro to the city of Longview. Thank you, guys.
Very sweet. Good.
Yes, I'd like to thank the, all the people that from the city of Longview that came out and walked for the, walked into Alzheimer's and the, all the people that participated outside of all the teams. So we raised a lot of money, hopefully for the, to help end that disease. And so it just, your fight matters on that. And then speaking of animal care adoption dog, there's Dog Lucy that we adopted from Animal Care and Adoption Center that we had out there as well. We have another one, Brick, that we've adopted from there too, but he's not as nice. So we left him at the house. So appreciate that. And next. And I also like to thank everybody that came out to the District Four Town Hall. It's my third annual one. We had a great crowd, so I appreciate that. Great feedback, great questions and great involvement. So everybody, thank you for being there. Also deeply thank you to the staff that was there as well to provide support, answer any of the questions that are there. Appreciate you taking time away from your family to be there that night. So thank you again for being there as well. And then also the National Night Out. This is just a few of the pictures of the parties that I attended. And so we got those in there. One on the bottom, the middle one, you're going to have to look closer, but in the background, there's Wayne, who's the host of the party, who was not able to be part of the party because he had to be quarantined. But we made sure we had him part of the picture, so I just loved that moment that we had there and appreciate that. And also want to say thank you, specifically thank you to all the officers that went out. I know that you all put a lot of effort and time into this, and I know that they've done a lot for me. Brandon was amazing and then also Kemper was amazing too as well as part of being there. So just thank you again from the bottom of my heart. And everybody that threw a party, been at a party, went out and did it. Deeply thank you.
And echoing the same sentiments that everybody else has across here, National Night Out, it was my first one as a council member. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I want to thank Josh Mars, who was my officer, who was my chauffeur and my photographer. I tried my best. I didn't know all the rules and stuff to get ahead. I only attended 12. But I tried my best. I took John's advice. Hey, put your addresses. And I'm not going to say Sydney would be in the same boat paddling with me, but he had to give all the explanation of how to do it. I put it in ChatGPT to see how, what my direction would be, how long I could be there talking. It said six minutes, a stop. And I'm like, all y'all know me by now, six minutes does not work. I can, I can visit. But I'm telling you, we, we had a great time. The officers of fire department that we've seen around different places, kids enjoyed it. It was great. I can't look, I'm looking forward to it again. I don't know why we don't do it twice a year. And then next slide, was there another slide? Oh, okay, missed another slide. Tomorrow morning, got the honor to be with, the fire department's going to be out at Spring Hill at the primary kindergarten and first, second grade with one of their blow-up tents. I'm looking forward to that. If you've got a kid in there, great opportunity to come out and take some pictures. I know your kids will be excited. Fire Safety Week.
Perfect. Mr. Allen?
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I want to say thank you first off, as many others have said, to the police department for all their time and effort they put into this. And I would like to say particularly thank you to Sergeant Powell, who was my, who drove and I rode. I was the, the one riding beside and she was driving and took me around to the different events. We had a lot of good food, much more than we should have had, but we had a lot of good food. And really appreciate the people coming out. It's just really good to come out and meet your neighbors and then meet the local police force and the fire department and, and just become friends on a basis where you feel confident that if you should need them, they'll be there to help you and take care of you. But again, thank you to Sergeant Powell for the, taking me around to the different events. Thank you.
Perfect.
Just to say thank you, Chief Boone, and thanks Chief Grimes. They took Mary Ann and I around, so we just got to ride shotgun and eat food and rest in between, so.
Perfect. Haunted Library, very popular event that we have. The Haunted Library returns to the Longview Public Library on October 17th and 18th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Tickets are $5 and go to the Friends of the Longview Public Library, which raises money to support the facility. Please check that out at longviewtexas.gov/hunted. We'll begin this next week, moving back from Municipal Annex Building, the old Longview PD, which was renovated as part of the 2018 bond. This facility will house our municipal court, human resources, grants, partners in prevention, keep Longview beautiful, and more. Our goal is to have all of our resources for residents close together for ease of access. Please be gracious during the move as some of our team members will be moving in between two offices in the upcoming weeks. Thank you also to everybody for National Night Out. Great job, lots of fun. We now will have two different executive sessions. We will start with Executive Session B, Section 551071 of the Texas Government Code to consult with our attorney to discuss and deliberate authorizing a settlement of claims. We may reconvene an open session to vote on this item. We're going to come back after that one and then we'll do that. Yes, so we will leave and come back.
I got chocolate here, though.
That's in honor of our good friend.
Okay, we are reconvening after executive session B. Do I have a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Let him read it.
Okay.
I forgot about that.
I apologize for the time. This was due a very thorough discussion, and I feel that at this point, we have done a very thorough discussion, and we've agreed. I move to approve the ordinance on the condition that a full and final...
Release.
Release is...full and final release is...
Signed.
Is signed, yes. Full and final release is signed.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance is approved. Thank you so much, guys. We will now retire into executive session A under Personnel Matters. Texas Government Code Section 551074. We will not reconvene.